Zoning appeals. And as you can all know, we're doing this on Zoom and we have Clay Matthews with us and Daphne to try to help us with technical issues. As I've come to say, if for some reason we lose the Internet and we crash, which hasn't happened so far, all matters are continued until the next hearing in October. But hopefully we'll be able to work through them. I'm supposed to also tell everyone that this is both being recorded and we believe televised on the Needham Channel. So the first matter is to deal with the minutes of our meeting on August 18th and the site visit. We had a paddle court on August 20th. And by the way, I'm going to ask Ms. Berardi to be the voting member tonight. Mr. Tienkin is missing. Unless there are some changes to suggest I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved, Jared.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So let me begin. Case number one, 107 Lexington Avenue. Lexington 107 LLC applicant has made application to the Board of Appeals for special permit under section 6.1.2, 7.5.3, and any other applicable sections of the bylaw to allow a third car garage associated with the new construction of a new single-family residence. The property is located at 107 Lexington Avenue, Needham, Mass., in the single residence B District. And before we begin this hearing, some of the comments suggest that there's a misunderstanding. We're not here tonight to determine whether a house can be built on this lot or even the size of the house. That will all be determined by the building inspector. The only question that's before us tonight is in that structure that they build, will they be limited to two-car garage or can they have a third car garage? And that's really the only issue that's been before the board tonight. So who is presenting on this?
Good evening. My name is Vlad Vilkemir. I'm with GS Development Group. We're the construction company and I'm also the owner of 107 Lexington Ave. Basically restating everything you said, it's a single-family B District, proposing and asking for a special permit for a third car garage in a single-family house. I sent over all the architectural plans. The house that we are proposing fits the neighborhood very well. New England look, cable roofs, nothing out of character. I believe Mr. Roach agreed with the plans that he saw. And that's basically just the third car garage is all we're asking for, for a special permit.
Let me go through some various comments we have. The Department of Public Works has no comment on the third car garage. And in addition, they've indicated that you have filed plans dealing with the town bylaw and water infiltration that you filed with your application and it's been approved by the engineering department. Plan, so all the rainwater that comes off the new structure will be captured and put into dry wells so it doesn't run down the street.
Yes.
The Plant Planning Board made a little bit of a strange comment. I think really addressed to the look of the house you propose. I'm just looking for it here so I can read it. The Planning Board asked the zoning Board of Appeals to give special consideration to how the aesthetic presentation of the proposed design will fit into the neighborhood. We can come back to that. The building inspector, as you said, had no problem, although he notes that you may have to take some special measures about drainage during the construction period, which he would plan to work out with you. I mean, I must say, I drove up there and this will be the first three-car garage in the whole neighborhood. A lot of two-car garages and a lot of single-car garages, but no three-car garages. And I can't really tell from your elevation, is the third garage set back or is this one kind of uniform across the front?
Yes, we set the third car the farthest left a little bit back to give it a little bit more of a nice aesthetic look. I believe there is a third, another house around the corner. I believe it's 101 Tower. And I think they also had a three-car garage driving by. I also did a little driving around to take a look, but I'm not 100% sure. I believe I saw that.
Yeah, there are not many. So it is a little, it is a little different. Does anyone on the board have a question or comment?
The same concern that it's very large and it's, I'm glad to hear that setback, which is an important aesthetic factor, and be curious to hear about what the neighbors have to say. Because that's part of the test under 6.1.2.
I also had a question. If you don't get the third car garage approved, what will that space be? Will it still be there?
As a part of the house? I'm not sure at the moment, to be honest with you. I probably not. I mean, we would just probably cut it off at this point. We thought that it fits the neighborhood. Well, it's a very wide lot and it fits pretty well. You know, when you look on the block plan and on the elevations, I think it fits the neighborhood personally.
So the test in the bylaws that the premises in question are reasonably adaptable to such use and will allow a proper layout. And it will not alter the character of the premises in which it's located, will not have a material adverse effect on the value of the land or building structures in the neighborhood, will not produce any noise or glare observable from the lot lines to the detriment of adjacent properties. So that's the test we're supposed to apply. Is there anyone here from the public who wants to be heard?
Yes. And let me go ahead and promote them. We have two hands raised. Mark Pantridge. I'm going to be promoting you as a panelist, Mark.
Yeah, I should mention that we did have correspondence from two neighbors and one included, I think it was Mr. Pantridge, that included some pictures of the water running down the street during a rainstorm. So there's clearly a problem there with water runoff.
There is, there is issues with water in that neighborhood. There was a complaint by a neighbor from 15 Hoover. I did speak to Mr. Roach about it this morning and... The fact that the neighbor has an issue with it is a little bit strange because the neighbor is actually above us. There's no way for our water to really hit the neighbor. If anything, we're collecting all the water for the neighbor and we'll be getting rid of all this water, which Dave Roach is saying is going to actually help the neighborhood a lot. We've agreed to...
Well, let's let Mr. Pantridge speak and we'll find out what his concern is. You need to unmute yourself, sir. There you go.
Okay. Good evening. Can you hear me?
We can, and see you.
That's good news. My wife Maggie is here. Thank you for holding this hearing and for giving us a hearing. If you can give me a couple of minutes, I do understand the limitations of the hearing and that this is about the garage. I have had trouble getting some attention to the water issues. So if you could just bear with me and let me speak, and I'm not here to obstruct anything. I'd love to work with the town and the builder to make everyone happy. So I'm not against the new construction and the plans I've seen, which Ms. Collins sent to me, the house looks attractive, although as I will get to, the three-car garage is a bit excessive for our neighborhood, in my opinion. We look forward to welcoming our new neighbors there and I hope my concerns will be a benefit to them as well as us in the long run. I don't believe there are good reasons to overrule section 6.1.2A and B, which, as you know, and I think you've already stated, will not alter the character of the premises in which it is located and will not have a material adverse effect on the value of the land and buildings and structures in the neighborhood. First, I'll assume in good faith and intention, I'll assume it was in good faith and unintentional, but I would like to point out that I believe there's some inaccuracies in the application. It states that there is an existing one-car garage, which there is not. It is just a small house there. And it also states that the height of the existing building is 33.8 feet. I haven't measured it, but I don't think that's accurate. It's probably the height of the proposed house would be my guess. So what I would say is there should be a very compelling reason to override the existing standards. In reference to A, will not alter the character of the premises in which it is located, it does not seem to me that allowing for extra storage space, quoting from the application, in a house that is already going to be of significant size meets that standard to override. This is contributing to what, in my opinion, is you altering the character of the premises from being a small old-fashioned bungalow with a large surrounding yard into something quite different. And I expect we will continue to lose appropriately scaled tree line, New England feel of our neighborhood, which is part of what made this a desirable street. I realize I have to accept to some extent as part of progress, there are limits. As to Part B, will not have a material adverse effect on the value of land and buildings or structures in the neighborhood, this is where I think that the water issue does come in because the entire street is flooded frequently for the entire 24 years that my family has lived here. And there are several sources of water and it's not all coming from 107, so I don't want to say that it is. But there is water coming through that lot and flooding the street frequently. I want to thank the Needham DPW, who has been very responsive to my concerns over the years. They've come out a couple of times and even just recently to do good work on the street, which has helped protect our property from being flooded from upper levels. Nevertheless, the situation seems to have gotten worse over the years as there's been new construction uphill from us on Hoover Road and on Lexington Avenue itself. To the point of this application, what concerns me most right now is the water that flows through 107, which sometimes in literally two surface streams, as you can see in the photos that I submitted before the meeting. It comes to and adds to the flooding on the street pavement. Up until the DPW recently came and installed a high curb, very high curb in front of my house, the water and mud were flowing into and damaging my yard. Once again, thank you to the DPW for coming and doing something about this. Basically, they've built a dam in front of my house and it's been effective. Once, I believe the garage space will cover more ground and I expect cause more runoff as typically more buildings and driveway space does on soil. So it will exacerbate, it could exacerbate the existing problem. It seems to me the water issue should be addressed more at its root cause and I'm glad to see some actions being paid to this situation. But if I understand it correctly, I'm concerned the water trapped by this proposed storm tech system, which I admit I don't know much about, but may now dispense the water under the street rather than onto the street and more likely to actually impact our properties downhill, mine and my neighbors. I hope the building inspector will factor this into and the builder, into the approval process and the build process to mitigate the problem at this really perfect opportunity to finally do something about this. We have zoning laws in the town for a reason and they should only be overridden in extreme circumstances. Thank you all on the board and you are the owner and builder. I appreciate your attending the meeting. Sound like you're a guy. And I hope we can work with you to make this work for everybody. And thank you very much for all this time.
One thing I want to say is regardless of the size of the structure, the same amount of rain comes down. And from our experience in seeing a lot of these, there's actually really likely to be an improvement because the town now requires that they capture all the rain runoff from the structure and put it into dry wells so that it doesn't run along the surface of the ground. So I don't, I have no idea and I doubt that it's going to solve the problem of the water coming down the hill, but it typically deals with all the water coming off the structure.
Okay, interesting.
And by the way, I mean, I really leave it to the engineering department to approve or disapprove these plans. Well, it is an expertise.
Okay. Well, no offense to the engineering department. As I've said, I've gotten from town departments before, so I'm not here to create a confrontation or anything, but the fact is, is that the water runoff has been getting exacerbated and is worse and worse as the new house comes up the hill. And so whatever's being done is not adequately protecting either the people using the public street or the neighbors below. I understand this is not a zoning issue, but if I could ask that maybe someone could help me get the attention of the building inspector to...
Oh, you have his attention. But by the way, the storm water by law is relatively new. I want to say maybe 18 months or two years ago. So houses built before that didn't have to comply with this trapping all the water that comes off the house.
So can anyone, I know this is, once again, not your purviews in particular, but can anyone explain besides the storm tech, which is to address then the water coming off the house, what is being done to ameliorate the problem of the streams of water flowing down from the, behind 107 in literal, literally brooks of water coming?
I saw, I saw your picture. It's pretty ugly. But let's, let's let the builder talk about it.
Okay, sure.
Yes, so I understand your concerns. I know exactly what you're talking about because I don't know the neighborhood as well as you do, but I have been in contact with Mr. Roach. I've done a lot of work in Needham over the past 14 years and he explained to me the situation in the neighborhood and what he recommends. We were okay with everything that he recommended. It's going to cost us an arm and a leg, but it is what it is and we're going to do it. I did notice one thing on the last storm. I believe it's number 115, if I remember, which is the house to the left of us. It's a house that I believe was built a few years back. And when this house was built, they did not require for the runoffs to be captured on premises. And his runoffs are being completely diverted to the street and then down the hill, which the owner himself told me about. Mr. Roach actually sent him a letter about trying to change that situation because he's in the same situation where 107 is in, where there's a lot of water coming down that way. He said that he was not able to at the moment do this for financial reasons, but we are in conversations with him because we will be doing a lot of work next door. My site guy happens to be the same site guy who helped the builder at 115. And he said that he will work with him to try to connect him to the overflow system as well, which I believe will help the street drastically, you know, reduce the amount of water. Again, it doesn't matter the size of the house. Water is water, rain is rain. We're not going to, you know, be able to capture everything coming from every neighbor, but I think with the systems that we will be putting in place, it's going to help it drastically.
Hi, Mr. Vilkemik, I appreciate that approach. And that, that sounds good. I'm not an expert in this area. You are right, a good amount of the water is coming from exactly where you're referring to and was not dealt with at the time. And that's kind of what I'm referring to. It was not dealt with when the house behind 107 on Hoover was built. And, and that, that was, that is basically a disaster for every house below it, including your new property there. So maybe they were both built right before the new stormwater regulations went in. I hope these new ones are effective because it's, it's just, it's just not right. I've made my case and...
All right, thank you. Yeah, thank you. Is there someone else that wants to be heard?
Yes, John, we have four, four individuals who have their hand raised. I'm going to go ahead and promote the next one is Kevin Keane. Mr. Keane, I'm going to promote you to a panelist.
All right, there we go. We can see you.
All right, great. Thank you. Hey, you know, my concern is I'm very happy that you're dealing with rainwater and the, and the water off the building. That's, that's a big step. But I think you're missing the boat. The problem isn't rainwater. The problem is there's a spring in that yard. And I think you're water perpling up regardless of a rain event. And that street, Lexington Ave, has been basically, in the winter, it turns into a sheet of ice, has been doing this since the 70s. My argument would be that the existing house there probably displaced enough water with this foundation, this footprint to create an event, an icing event on Lexington Ave. I think a larger house would displace more water. And, you know, if there's going to be a third garage, my complaint is that's just even too much. So I would nip this and say no third garage. Just if you're building the house, do your mitigation, but your mitigation for rainwater isn't, isn't the issue. The issue is there's a spring in that property. The neighbor next door downstream from this property, last winter, the story was that the, the water department came, they thought there was a water main break in this, in this driveway caused by the spring that's going through and down Lexington Ave. So my concern is that you're looking at rainwater events and thinking you're going to mitigate it, but you have a spring there. You have a bigger problem. Thank you.
Mr. Keane, could I have your address, please?
88 Lexington Avenue.
Thank you.
Good. Who's next?
The next is Reikler. Reikler, you've been promoted as a panelist.
Why don't you go to the next one and then maybe we'll come back?
All right. So John, I promote John to, as a panelist.
Sorry, this, can you, can you see me? It's Ruth McKinnon. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, this weekend and we can see you.
Okay, great. Right, I just, I want to...
Tell us who you are and your address.
My name is Ruth McKinnon. My married name was Ruth Eichler, so that is still the name on the deed, but it's Ruth McKinnon. I'm at 79 Lexington Avenue. So I'm, I'm downstream, right across from Mr. Keane. And I only want to say that I certainly have support wholeheartedly what Mr. Pantridge has laid out as well as Kevin Keane. And Kevin is right. I've lived in this neighborhood for over 25 years and my understanding was always that our homes were built on a brook. In fact, the meaning of the word, the name of the street, Burnside, is living near a stream. It's a Scottish term and that's, we live at the corner of Lexington and Burnside. So my house, for example, the water table is so high from this stream that I give, the town thought that I also had a broken water pipe coming from my house because water just pours out of my front lawn, down the street and ices over in, whenever we have a heavy rainstorm. So it's just, I'm just trying to also reiterate the problems that we've had on this street for many, many years and still do. And partly it's because we are constructed on ledge and a brook, a stream. So, and the new construction has not helped it. So if you're trying to mitigate water and putting it underground, just understand that you're going to be feeding it into another stream. So I hope that's clear. Thank you.
We have another community member?
Yes, he's, he's already joined us. It's a person who just, his name is John, so he needs to unmute and...
Step in front of the video.
John? All right. So to...
Can anyone hear me? Can anyone receive me?
Yes.
I'm here.
We can hear you, but we can't see you.
Well, as long as you can hear me. It's probably better that you can't see me. I, I'm John and I must respectfully submit, I'm basically on this call because I'm present to support my good neighbor, Mark, and his request for some relief down there. I'm upstream. I'm up on Hoover. And I don't know if the board got all of my emails. I sent them in. They're pretty much the facts and nothing but the facts, the way I see them. But everything that I've heard is pretty much accurate. There is something that's happening with the water. And it's not a good thing. Matter of fact, did all the board members get my email?
Could you please identify yourself?
Yeah, who are you?
And your address?
Yes, I'm John Kalin.
Yes, we got, we got Mr. Kalin's emails, yes.
Okay, so basically those are the facts. I'm up on 15 Hoover Road, okay? I'm upstream on...
You may be one of the people causing the problem.
No, no, actually that's not accurate because I've tried to, I'm in the very unfortunate position that I'm the last guy on the line. And now you can recall that basically we've had a drought here. And September 11th, we only had a half an inch of rain and my garage got flooded by the other project. But basically what I'd like to help here is both the neighbor and possibly the applicant in helping to understand, because I've been around for a long time. And I'm going to apologize in advance if my facts, you know, offend anybody. I don't mean any offense. I'm really trying to help out here. But I think that it would be in our best interest probably not to have the extra garage because you may need more space just to, to store the water. Because I'd like to thank the, the board itself, but also our building commissioner, I think his name is Roach, David Roach. And he's kind of assured me, just like the builder did, that going forward, there's a lot of ways to keep this water under the ground on the property without having it flood somebody else out. So basically, I'm here to support Mark and, you know, no offense to the builder, I'm sure he, he's going to do a great job and it's going to be a good addition to the neighborhoods. But from where I stand, I think the main issue is, is the water. And once we get a good solution to that, I think everybody will be happy. And I would acquiesce to the wisdom of the majority of the board to make a good decision. So I'm here to support Mark in not to do any harm to the builder.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else with her?
Yes, we have two more. Barry Sullivan. Barry, I'm going to promote you as a panelist.
How's that? Oh.
Okay, we see you now.
Okay, I'm Barry Sullivan. I'm 101 Lexington. Welcome to the neighborhood. I'm with the house to the right. I also know of the issues with Audrey's property or your property now. If you are facing the house on the right side in the back, that can be a swamp when we don't even have, we haven't had rain. So it's swamp and it's kind of oily, whatever is perking up. So um that it's swamp and it's kind of oily, whatever is perking up. Um, so just to keep that in mind, it really is on that that right side. Um, there's also a well back there. But um after getting the the letter, I went around and probably did almost a a mile circle around this neighborhood. And I did not find any three-car garages. Did see some three-car garage properties on um on the other side of Mitchell, but not in this vicinity. So it it will change the uh the feel of the neighborhood. Um, I am not, I won't be looking at it, so it's not something that that aesthetically would would be an issue, but I just feel it does change the neighborhood and that was one of the criteria. That's that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
John, we have one more panelist and it is a Mr. Ronan Kane. Going to promote him as a panelist.
Hi there. Um, I'm actually Eileen Keen. Ronan is my son. I live at eighty-eight Lexington Avenue and um all my neighbors just spoke. And um I have to tell you that in terms of the water, I know that's actually what you're not addressing tonight. I heard you at the beginning, but um I've actually lived in this neighborhood fifty-two years, my entire life. And I can tell you, I walked to Needham High School in the seventies and went down that hill. And we'd always jump on the Owens front lawn, which is Mark's front lawn now because of so much ice. I can't believe how much ice is on there now. Um, that stream is really active. And I just hope that the builder knows what's underneath there because when he starts to dig, there's going to be a lot of water coming your way. Um, so let me just address the three-car garage issue. Um, sometimes you just have to say, there's beauty all around us, right? And our neighborhood's really nice and we're not opposed to change. I'm not. I told my kids when they heard about this. I said, listen, I said, it'd be nice to have a different house, new neighbors. I said, I'm sure the builder's really going to be nice and their crew is going to be nice. But let's get real, there are no three-car garages around here. And my personal opinion, which I know you're not going to take into consideration, is if it's really for storage, if this house is as massive as they're saying, then maybe the homeowners can get some advice on how to store their stuff upstairs in the attic or somewhere else. But um you asked for our opinions uh at the beginning in terms of neighbors and what we think. Uh, we welcome new neighbors. We welcome a new house. We knew that was coming when she sold. We definitely knew that. We welcome the builder in a neighborhood actually, too. Um, but the three-car gar- garage is just way too much for this neighborhood. Maybe on South Street it would fit better when there's more land, to be perfectly honest with you. So thank you for letting me speak and thank you for being so respectful of all the neighbors who did speak tonight. It's been really nice to be here, the process, um, and I appreciate it.
Thank you for participating. Um, is there anyone else who wants to speak then?
That that takes care of all the panels. We have nobody else with their hands raised.
All right, well, let's go back to the builder and let him comment on all he's heard. It sounds like he's bought a problem property.
I don't think it's a problem property. I think that there's always been water. There's going to be water. I think none of the houses are capturing the water. I understand nobody seems to be on board with a third-car garage out of neighbors. But a third-car garage is not going to, as Mr. uh Keen, I believe, said, cause more water issues. If you don't like it aesthetically, that's obviously your opinion. But as far as water, which has seemed to become the topic of tonight with this property, uh, it's not going to make it more or less. We're going to be capturing our water. We're going to be maintaining our water. We're going to be planting a lot of trees, a lot of shrubs, which will help percolate a lot of the water. I don't see a reason to not approve a third-car garage for water reasons, basically.
Uh, have have you done any soil testing to make sure this will perk?
Uh, we have done the cut and cap of the water and sewer. And uh Michael Shea is the site person who'll be digging everything and putting in all the systems, the cul-de-sacs and the overflows. He has done numerous houses in uh this neighborhood. He did the house next door to us. He did the house behind us on Hoover.
Sorry, you're frozen.
These issues, this doesn't come as of a surprise. We're used to, you know, working with uh houses that have water issues. We know how to maintain it. We know how to make it right. We work with the engineering department. We work with the building department to put every system that they want us to put in in place.
Okay, thank you. All right, so so I'm going to close the hearing and the board will deliberate. Um, unless the any of the board members have another question.
Uh, I just actually did have one more question. If the third-car garage is not there, are you planning to pave that area as a bump-out driveway or what's the plan?
I'm not a hundred percent sure at the moment, to be completely honest with you. Um, I would go back to the architect and I would obviously have to redo certain portions of this house. Uh, I know everybody's saying, you know, quote-unquote enormous, but it's not an enormous house. It's actually smaller than most of the houses that are being built in that neighborhood at the moment. So it it fits the piece of land. There's still going to be a lot of side yard and front yard and backyard. So I actually could have gone bigger than what we did. So, you know, I guess that's another option. We can go bigger, but that wasn't that wasn't something we were trying to do. We were trying to put a beautiful house and a beautiful piece of land. But if the third-car garage is not what people want, we can definitely change that.
Okay. So um, Mr. Goldman, you have any questions?
Uh, no, no questions. Just some comments, but.
Why don't you give us your comments?
Uh, you you seem like you're a very conscientious builder, experienced. You've been exposed to water. This appears to 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 be really too big, according to the folks who have testified that live around there. Uh, and if you're, you know, it does appear to alter the character in some way. So and if you're flexible, uh, you know, perhaps you you might uh reconsider the the design. I I do think that this is this is this is problematic compared to the the rest of the neighborhood.
Okay, Ms. Parity?
Um, so I have some concerns as well. Um, and you know, what I was trying to get at in my questions was really if the third-car garage isn't approved and we've heard these in cases before where the door isn't approved, but the space is still okay in terms of block coverage and um, you know, other requirements, you know, what else is going to be there? So I understand that it does seem to alter the characteristics of this particular neighborhood. But the question in my mind has more to do with, well, if we don't allow for the third bay, meaning there's no garage door, what's going to be there to take its place? It could be more structure of the house that's going to displace just as much water. It could be an impervious surface like a driveway. Um, so that's what I was trying to get at, to try to figure out, you know, there aren't any other three-car garages, but what is going to take the place of it if it's not built? And is that going to be any better or worse than a three-car garage?
Mr. Friedenberg, you have any thoughts on this?
Well, I I think I I also am moved by the the testimony that there are no three-car garages in in this neighborhood. Uh, I suppose it's possible that excuse me, and I don't know whether under the most recent zoning changes, whether you could basically take the the two left-hand garage bays, make those the garage and turn what would would have been the third garage bay closest to the house into space. So I I don't think that whatever we decide today is going to really change the size of the house. Uh, my guess is is that the the floor area is going to stay there. Uh, but I I I am troubled by the fact that this would be the first now, possibly the second, third-car garage in the neighborhood. Uh, and and I do think, you know, looking at six point one point two, I think that does alter the character of the premises.
Okay, um m- my thoughts are the following. I don't think the third-car garage affects the water problem one way or another. As I said earlier, the same amount of rain comes down regardless of the size of the house. And they're going to catch all the rain and put it into an infiltration system. Uh, I I was honestly bothered when I drove around the neighborhood and, you know, the planning board made the comment. I looked at the plans and aesthetically, this does look odd for the neighborhood. On the other hand, I think everybody ought to understand if we deny this, the the builder may increase the size of the house by a significant amount. Uh, I don't, this is a pretty big lot and I don't thi- as he said, I don't think he's anywhere near the the limits the zoning law would put on him. So um everyone may get something worse than a third garage if we deny this. But I think we're at a point where you have to make a decision. Someone want to make a motion?
Sure. That the applicant's request for a special permit under section six point one two and seven point five three to of the bylaw to allow a third-car garage associated with a new construction of a single-family home in this residence, uh, B District. The motion, um.
Be denied?
Be denied.
Okay, you want to second that, Ms. Parity?
I'll second it.
Okay, we'll vote on this. Who's who who's in favor of the motion to deny?
I am in favor of motion to deny.
I am in favor. I I'm not in favor of the motion to deny.
And I'm not in favor of the motion to deny. Um, but we have to have a unanimous approval. And since we're not unanimous, then um the application is denied. Sorry.
So, okay.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Let's move on to the next matter. All right, I got my papers all shuffled here.
It's one fifty, it's one fifty Gould Street.
There's a lot of previous decisions, yes.
There we go. All right. So case number two, one fifty Gould Street, Baker's Best applicant has made application to the Board of Appeals for special permit amendment under section one point four point six, three point two point one, five point one point one point five, five point one point two, five point one point three, seven point five point two, and the other applicable sections of the bylaw to allow a takeout restaurant or other eating establishment in connection with the existing commercial catering and commissary to waive strict adherence with the off-street parking requirements, parking plan, design requirements associated with the additional use properties located at one fifty Gould Street, Needham, Mass. in the industrial one district. I think Mr. Jenta is here on this one.
Yes, I am. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Uh, George Jenta Junior appearing this evening on behalf of Baker's Best. And I think the board uh probably is recalls and is familiar with Baker's Best because they were just before you back in July, as I'll get to in a minute. So Baker's Best, um, and Michael Baker is here on the on a Zoom meeting as well. Uh, he basically has been in operation for, I think, a little over thirty-six years now total uh with a a an operation that used to be in Newton Highlands and then was there for twenty-seven years and for the last fifteen years or so, or more than fifteen years, he's operated the commercial kitchen and commissary out of Needham. Uh, and that was approved by a special permit decision from the board back in two thousand and six. Under that decision, Baker's Best occupied one-half of the existing building at one fifty Gould Street, and then the other half was occupied by United Refrigeration, which was a a retail and wholesale parts company that did, uh, you know, HVAC parts and such. Uh, then this past July, Baker's came before the board and sought and received permission to expand their space to take over the entire building so that uh they, without changing their operation, they they essentially spread out a little bit, gain themselves a little bit of elbow room, a larger break room and more storage area. Uh, and as I said, the board approved that. And uh so they, Baker's took over the rest of the building and everything was fine uh until, of course, COVID hit. And uh as if you remember, the the operation, Baker's Best is essentially a catering operation. They do a lot of large events, or should say they used to do a lot of large events, a lot of corporate events. And between the restrictions on large gatherings and people, you know, companies requiring people to work at home, uh, basically they have lost virtually all of their corporate business and a substantial part of their catering business for sort of large non-corporate gatherings. Uh, it it's to the point where they've actually had to reduce their staff by close to eighty percent. So they have taken a a very real and a very substantial hit as a result of COVID, right after they expanded their space and, you know, we're looking forward to, you know, really kind of running like a well-oiled machine. So, uh, you know, the Board of Selectmen, in order to help businesses in town, has been granting temporary limited curbside pickup permits. And so Baker sought and obtained one of those. Uh, it's been renewed and it's set to expire in October. However, you know, from all indications, COVID is going to continue at least for some time. And it will likely take some time, even once COVID is gone, you know, for things to return to a point where the business model can return to back what it used to be. So therefore, Baker's would like to have something that's a little bit more permanent in the way of relief to enable curbside pickup. Um, so basically what, you know, what happened is they used to have, people would phone in orders or fax in orders. Baker's would put the s- the food together, put the meals together. They would then put them in their trucks and they would go out and they would deliver them, you know, to gatherings, corporate events or whatnot. With the curbside pickup, now instead of having the deliveries go out, people are coming to the to the location. And although it's not a huge business, it is at least helping them keep the lights on and keep operating. Uh, so basically they're doing, you know, what you would expect, contactless pickup where orders have to be placed and prepaid. Then when customers come and they arrive, they have to phone and let Baker's know that they're there. An employee then comes out and provides the food, you know, maintaining social distancing, uh, and then the people go off. So it's a it's a pretty smooth, pretty, you know, minor transaction. Um, and really, there's very little impact to the site itself. Now, you know, probably the biggest thing of note with respect to this, the use itself is permiti- is permissible under a special permit under three point two point one, uh, which was part of the relief we requested. And as a part of that, because it is technically a form of a takeout station, it adds an additional ten parking spaces to the parking calculation. So as a result, we need some form of modification of the existing parking waiver. However, as I noted, the staff has been reduced by close to eighty percent. So if you recall back in July, we I presented a series of different calculations for parking demand for the business that ranged anywhere from a low of forty-two all the way up to a high of seventy-one. And and then explained that, you know, Baker's has had such a long history of working with its employees for carpooling and shuttles and things like that, that they really had good hard data that showed that they really only needed sixty actual spaces. Now, with the reduction in staff and the reduction of business, they basically now only need approximately twenty spaces at most. But most of the time, they really only need like fifteen spaces. But still, they don't want to give up the permit because hopefully someday they'll be able to go back to their business model. And as a part of that, when the board approved the expansion in July, one of the requirements was that they maintain twenty-nine off-site parking spaces, which they have done and they continue to do, and they're going to continue to do that. So there's thirty-three spaces on site. With the addition of the twenty-nine off-site spaces, there are a total of sixty-two parking spaces available. As I indicated, at most, at the peak time ever, they require twenty spaces for their employees. That leaves forty-two spaces available for the the contactless curbside pickup. So in practical terms, in real world, there's plenty of parking right now. Uh, there shouldn't be any issue at all, and I think you've actually have a letter from the building inspector mentioning that they haven't had any issues, um, you know, with respect to parking or traffic. The one issue, I guess, there was at one point, there was a an issue about uh early deliveries, but that was resolved uh quickly and uh to the to the neighbor apparently, and the building inspector said. uh, early deliveries, but that was resolved, uh, quickly and, uh, to the, to the neighbor apparently and the building inspector satisfaction. So, so really, things have run pretty smoothly. And now Baker's is just looking for a more formal form of relief to be able to keep doing this without having to keep going in and getting extensions and knowing that they can count on having this income to keep going for, you know, until they can get back to their original business model.
So, um, where is the pickup happening?
Yeah, um, that's Michael Baker, um, the pickup is happening on the front of the building. And I'd say that there are never more, not never, but very rarely more than ten to fif- maybe ten to twenty pickups a day. And that's throughout the course of the day.
So, 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 um, I mean, I understand that right now there's not a parking problem. But what happens when COVID goes away and they crank back up?
Uh, I can't imagine that, you know, unfortunately, our business. Yeah, I, I think it will pick up for sure, but, um, I can't imagine that our business is going to get back to where it was at any point, you know, certainly while I'm running it. Our business, uh, you know, with the people zooming and not working and, you know, most of our business is corporate. And, um, a lot of people are just not going back to the office like they had been in the past, and I, I can't imagine. I hope, I, I hope that we can get back to fifty percent of where we were. It's pretty dire right now. And, um, you know, basically this curbside pickup is a a number of orders, but they're pretty small orders and it's a pretty quick transactions. But I, you know, if your concern is, you know, we're going to get back to where we were and the number of employees and the use of parking, I, I don't think that's going to happen, unfortunately.
Okay, so, so, so unless we have some neighbor here complaining about this, I have absolutely no problem doing anything we can do to help your business succeed by letting this takeout go forward. But, um, I, I, I don't, you know, the, 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 when you were going full steam, parking was an issue and, you know, you had to do transporting from the T and all of that, and you did a fine job of that, but parking was tight. So, uh, I mean, I'm, I'm looking for something we can do on the parking. If you were to crank back up, I mean, could we put some limit on the number of employees?
Mr. Chairman.
While this is, is pending, that's, I mean, that's what I'm thinking.
Can I ask a question? I, the question that I had is if you do crank back up to where you were, would you even continue doing this takeout or is that not going to add enough? You know, it's like the original intent of the business was to be a catering company, and so if you do get back to that same level, would you still want to do this takeout curbside pickup?
I mean, I think that it would probably, you know, it's, the orders are not substantial. Um, I would say that if we would get back to where we were, um, I would have no problem giving up the pickup. I would be pleased to give up the pickup.
How many employees did you have when we heard this in two thousand nineteen eighty?
We had about, uh, uh, over a hundred and we have about twenty now. It's been disastrous for us, it really has.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, and I hope, I hope you can figure this out. But, um, sup- suppose we did something, I'm, I'm just, suppose we did something like you can't go over eighty employees with the takeout without coming back to the board, it sounds to me like that would.
You know, George, um, if you want to help me with this, I, I, you know, if we had eighty employees and we were doing three quarters of the business that we were doing, be thrilled to not, not do the pickup, the curbside pickup.
Mr. Chairman, I would actually suggest rather than tying it to the number of employees, because in the past, Baker's has had a number of part-time employees. So the raw number of employees doesn't really capture it, and then even when they've had, even like at their peak, when they had, I think it was eighty, might have been eighty-four employees or something like that on site, still, a good portion of those employees, something like twenty to thirty of those employees either were shuttled or, you know, used other forms of public, uh, public transportation or carpooling. So, and in fact, in the decision in July, there was a requirement that Baker's ensure that they manage essentially their, their employee load or flow so that there is not a, an overloading of the parking. And I, I think if anything, I would say, you know, we, we represented and it wasn't actually made, I don't think, a condition of the decision in July. But it certainly was a part of the presentation that the peak number of cars expected to be on site was, was not expected to be any greater than sixty. And there are sixty-two spaces available. So I would suggest maybe, you know, put a requirement that, that if, if the business changes to the point where the number of cars on site, including employees and customers, or the average number of cars exceeds sixty, they have to come back and either look for more relief or.
But we, 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 we could never figure out how many cars are on site permanently. I mean, I think the only thing that we could do that you can get a hold of is the number of employees.
What if we put a, a timeframe on it?
Sorry?
What if we put a timeframe on it, give them a two-year permit?
Or, or we could, you know, we could also do that, we could say we give you a permit to do this and a waiver that's good for two years and then you got to come back.
I think that would be great. That would be very fair, and, um, again, I'd be happy if we're doing the kind of vibe we were doing before. If you were to take away the pickup, that would be fine too. It's, you know, right now, it's just, uh, helpful.
Well, well, good luck and you've, I'm at one sixty Gould Street, part of a, a, a large commercial building and you've been a, a good tenant, quiet, and, and I'm glad to see there's activity. If this can help, then, then I think that, that I'd be supportive of it as well.
Thank you.
All right, so rather than us limiting the number of employees, you'd rather just have it be a two-year permit?
George?
Yeah, I, I actually think that would probably be, that would be better, yeah.
Okay.
Because then they can come back in and do a revisit and a reevaluation.
It's a lot simpler to administer also.
Give us an opportunity to promote it if we knew it was going to be available to us too, which, you know, we've done a little bit, but not, not to an extent, so.
All right. That's good. Is there anyone from the public here, Daphne, who wants to be heard?
There are no hands raised, John.
Okay, someone want to make a motion here?
Uh, any comments from the planning board or other folks, officials about the drains maybe?
Thank you, there, 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 there are essentially no comments. I mean, the building inspector noted that there had been a problem with early pickup, but it was resolved, I think. It was resolved in our, our last hearing. The, um, Public Works had no comment, the police, the, excuse me, the fire had no comment. And I, I don't think we got responses from the police, did we, Daphne?
No, we did not get comments back from the police for any of our cases.
So all, all the people who commented indicated no problem.
John, if I might add, just the, the building department actually said that they, um, that they, the, the, the owner had worked with the town to resolve sewer and water issues uh, to operate as responsible business, so that was a nice compliment they put in there. Because that, that was an issue one time with, with the neighbors complaining, and it sounds like you've done a, a nice job to resolve that.
Well, if you remember, there was a problem with sewage backing up into some people's houses.
Right.
All right, so, so Howard, you want to make a motion? Why don't we let Ms. Parity make a motion? She's, she's out of practice.
Sure, so I will, um, make a, a motion to approve the application, um, by the applicant Baker's Best for a special permit based on the applicable sections of the bylaw to allow a takeout restaurant or other eating establishment in connection with the existing commercial catering and commissary and to waive strict adherence with the off-street parking requirements, parking plan and design requirements for the property located at one fifty Gould Street, um, with the condition that the special permit terminate in two years from the date of, um, its allowance.
Well, I'm, I'm just thinking, uh, we definitely talked about two years, I wonder if it could be something not as hard as termination, but some type of, uh, uh, it, it, it may be renewed a, a, upon.
But of course it can be renewed.
Yeah.
I mean, they can just reapply to renew it, to extend it. I mean, we, we don't have to say that, I mean, they can come in and ask the have the permit extended or amended.
Okay.
Well, I mean, unless, unless I'm missing.
A two-year termination seems harsh, I mean, it seems like if there are businesses trying to market it, but you're right, so they can come back, but it just seemed, the ending to me seemed harsh. I was trying to suggest, or, or it is maybe amended, uh, uh, after a decision by the board, after a public hearing.
Yeah, we can, we can write that.
Well, I don't want to have to have a public hearing if they don't want to extend it.
Right. So what, we can terminate unless, um, the applicant asks for, I guess, new relief.
Sounds fair.
May, may I make a suggestion?
Sure.
So, so I think when the, the board has on rare, couple of rare occasions in the past for unusual circumstances, done something like this, and I think it was that the permit would expire unless extended or continued by the board or something to that effect. And I would also ask that as far as the date of termination, that you tie it to the date when it's, when the decision's filed with the town clerk, just so that that way it's easier to do the calculate, you know, two years from a date certain.
I agree with that.
My motion, that's amended.
As amended, would you second that, Mr. Gold?
Yes.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, hope you make it. You've been a good employer in Needham and we hope you make it.
Yeah, I thank you very much, guys, very much, we appreciate it and appreciate your support and you know, we'll, uh, hopefully we'll make it.
Well, we do good things about you, take it.
Thank you.
All right, so ca- case number three, one hundred, one twenty-four, Second Avenue. Second Street, D E L L C applicant has made application to the Board of Appeals for special permit amendment under sections one point four point six, three point two point four, five point one point, one point five, five point one point two, five point one point three, seven point five point two, and any other applicable sections of the bylaw to waive strict adherence with the off-street parking requirements, parking plan and design requirements associated with the proposed use of a portion of the premises for dental offices. The property is located at one hundred, one twenty-four, Second Street, um, in the New England Business Center District, Mr. Jenta.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much, George Jenta, Jr., again, appearing on behalf of the applicant on this application. So, so this is a commercial building, um, some of you may remember this is, the building itself was the former site of Gold's Gym. I know a lot of people seem to remember it as a landmark with respect to that. Uh, at one hundred dash, one hundred and twenty-four, Second Avenue, it's really the first commercial building, when you turn down Second Avenue off of Highland Avenue, sort of behind where Panera Bread is, uh, located. Uh, so it's parcel thirty-nine on sheet three hundred of the assessor's map and as indicated, it's in the New England Business Center, which is sort of a mixed-use district that has, uh, office, uh, some retail, um, some residential, you know, a number of different uses in it. So the, the existing building is a rather large building. Um, it's a twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine square foot building, sitting on an eighty-two thousand, two hundred and four square foot lot. Uh, the bill, the, the lot is conforming, the building is non-conforming as to rear yard setback in the, in the rear corner, it doesn't comply. Uh, but the building was built prior to zoning and we're not proposing any changes to the exterior of the building and the footprint. So that's largely irrelevant, uh, as to the relief that's being requested. Uh, right now, the building is broken up into four tenant spaces. Those are occupied currently by PPG Architectural Finishes, uh, which, which essentially is the, the new incarnation, I guess, or took over from Glidden, uh, Glidden Paint. Uh, then the next tenant is Maxim Health, and Atreus Health, and the space that is the subject for this evening, which is currently vacant. PPG Architectural Finishes occupies a bit over sixty-eight hundred square feet in the building. But as I'll get to in a little bit, their space is actually divided between a warehouse section and offices and a retail counter. Uh, Maxim Healthcare is a health personnel staffing company, so notwithstanding the name, they're not actually in the business of healthcare, they're in the business of people. Uh, and then Atreus Health used to operate a clinical, uh, clinical location there where they actually saw patients. But effective February tenth, they shut that down. And that's basically been largely vacant since, um, although they may be, um, I saw something that they may actually do flu shots there on a limited basis, but, but effectively they're out of the space and, and that space is now, you know, no longer occupied. Uh, so, um, so we're asking for a parking waiver because the proposed dental practice that's going to occupy the vacant thirty-two hundred square foot space is a use that is allowed as a right. Unfortunately, uh, the building as it's situated right now with respect to the, the existing tenants is already over the parking requirement and therefore the addition of the dental practice, which is going to increase parking demand by five spaces, will trigger the need for an off-street, uh, parking waiver. So, um, but before I get into the parking, let me introduce, I can see in the, on the screen here, we've got Ashley, um, Chip Check. I probably didn't pronounce that right, but.
I've tried, it's hard, I know.
Um, she's, she's one of the, the two dentists that will be occupying the space. Um, uh, her and Dr. Brady have been in operation on Highland Avenue. Uh, Dr. Brady's been in Highland Avenue since nineteen eighty-four, so this is an established dental practice that will be going in. Um, they, you know, are excited to occupy the space and have good plans for the space. Uh, so in the event there's any questions with respect to the use, I'll defer to Dr. Chapcheck. But, uh, but really, the, the issue is parking. So, so let's take a few minutes to talk about the, the parking and the parking calculation. So I gave, I submitted a memo and in the memo I did a, what I would consider a conservative calculation that took into account, uh, PPG, um, uh, architectural finishes as being entirely office or retail. Uh, notwithstanding the fact that it, that it includes a section of warehouse. So now I'm going to tell you, notwithstanding the calculation I provided you, one of the reasons why we think that a waiver is appropriate is because, uh, there is almost four thousand square feet of warehouse space. It's three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight square feet of warehouse space within the six thousand, eight hundred and seventeen square foot PPG space. So, you know, that's, that's over half of their space is actually warehouse. So when it comes to talking about practical parking demand, the calculated parking demand for their space is higher than what the actual demand is based upon the way they use their space. All right, that's number one. Number two, the Atreus Health space, you know, is currently vacant, they have about a year left on their lease, uh, so that we have to take them into account, but even taking them into account, their space includes both a common entry vestibule that's shared with their space and the space in question tonight. And also, it includes a small, um, electrical sort of conduit room that's basically shared utility room for the entire building. So the, when you take factor those two spaces in, the, the common vestibule is about seventy-six square feet and the electrical room is a hundred and ninety-five square feet. That reduces down the, the actual practical parking demand, uh, for their space as well. Uh, so, taking all that into account, if you deduct the, the vestibule and the electrical room from Atreus Health and you recalculate PPG based on the warehouse, you wind up with a current parking demand of ninety-eight spaces. Now, as shown on the site plan that was submitted, there are only ninety-five spaces on site. So there's already a shortfall of three spaces. All right, uh, so even taking, you know, even recalculating, there's still a shortfall of three spaces. But I do want to point out that, um, that that shortfall is, is partly due to the fact that the spaces were restripped, I believe, to accommodate van handicap spaces. So back in two thousand and six, Isis Maternity took the center part of the building. And when they came in and, and initially they sought a parking waiver on the number of spaces as well as the design. They ended up dropping the, the number of spaces request in favor of just the design request. But at the time, they submitted a parking plan that showed, uh, it actually technically showed ninety-eight spaces. So since then, three spaces have, have been lost and two of those are accounted for by the fact that the handicap spaces have changed, they were previously laid out differently. They did not necessarily accommodate a handicap van. Now the handicap spaces that are located on either side of the building been reconfigured to accommodate van, and so now as a part of that reconfiguration, two spaces were lost. In addition, if you noted on the site plan, this is one of the few buildings in town that actually has an electrical or, or an electric plug for electric vehicles. And the installation of the equipment, the, the charging station that goes with that took over a, a parking space so that an additional parking space was lost with that. All right, so we've got ninety-five spaces on site. The current building, uh, required. that. All right. So we've got 95 spaces on site. The current building requires 98, and the dental office is going to add five. However, as indicated, the Atrius is not currently occupied. So in terms of real-world parking demand, essentially Atrius has, has zero parking demand, and therefore in practice, there is more than adequate parking on site to support the, the dental practice. Now, in addition, the increase in the dental practice is, is only five spaces, which is a relatively small increase. That's five spaces over what would be required if the space was used for office or retail purposes. So I would propose that given the characteristics of the site, the fact that Atrius is currently vacant, that the site would support the parking waiver for these additional five spaces.
Do you know if there's street parking here?
There's no street parking directly in front of this property or directly across the street, but if you go down, maybe not even 100 feet, I think, on the opposite side of the street, there is street parking. Not, not a lot, but there's, there's several spaces. And in fact, when I went by there at one point, I think there were four or five cars parked there.
And you are not seeking a special permit, which would be required if there were three professionals?
That's right. This is, there are two dentists that are going in. It's Dr. Brady and Dr. Chichak. So as a result, it's a dental office, so there's no relief required for the use, just the relief required for the, for the way, for the parking.
Okay. See, we have comments from various town officials. If I could get to them. The building inspector raised the question whether you needed a special permit, and you've responded to that. And, you know, he said if there's no parking, he wanted, he asked for signage directing people into the lot. I don't know, it seems pretty strange to me, but does that make any sense to you, George?
Not, not really. It's, it's, if you've ever, if you've been to the site, I mean, it's, well, there is, there's a parking lot on one side of the building. Well, if you see it on the site plan, there's a parking lot on the other side, but this, this, the door for this use is actually on one end of the building. So I think it would be highly unlikely for somebody to get confused to go to the.
Is, is this on the Atrius side or on the other side?
The Atrius.
It's on the Atrius.
It's on the Atrius.
It's on the Atrius side, really good.
In, in fact, it shares a common vestibule with, with Atrius.
Got it. Public Works had no comment. Fire had no problem, and I believe the, and the planning board made no comment. And unfortunately, we didn't hear from the police, who would be the most familiar with parking requirements. I, I can say I used to be treated at Atrius, and there never was a problem parking, even when they were in operation. So personally, pretty sympathetic. What, does anyone on the board have questions?
Yeah, a quick question, George. Hours of operation, does it include the weekends, Saturdays?
It does include some Saturdays, yes.
So I would think that the parking would be, demand otherwise would be very quiet on Saturday. I don't know how much of, of the practice is on the weekend or not, but so that mitigates in favor of, of this waiver.
Regarding weekends, we're trying to do every other Saturday. So not every Saturday, but more likely every other.
Well, there's probably more parking available on the weekends.
Is there, is there anyone from the public who wants to be heard on this?
There are no hands raised.
I saw Mrs. Epstein had asked, and she, I know is right, lives right behind this.
Yeah. I think that George, George handled her concerns.
Okay. All right. Anything more to be said?
I, I just always, and it's always George on these cases. I think you do the Highland Ave, one, two. It, it always feels like we're squirting the, the parking needs down the road. So, so when the Atrius space is leased, and George comes back with that tenant and explains, as he very eloquently does, why, first of all, the real-world parking is very different from the requirements, but by the, even the required parking is wrong, and there's still not enough spaces. Is there ever, how do we ever reach the point where we say, you know, there's not enough parking? Is it the last guy on the train who?
Well, I, I mean, I honestly gave it a bunch of thought. This is like the bigger best problem is, I mean, they have to come from a parking waiver only if the new tenant has a higher parking demand under the bylaw than the old tenant. So they can put another health user into the Atrius space without coming back to us. And I, I kind of thought about, is it going to be a problem if Atrius, if that space were leased to another set of doctor's offices? And I can tell you, I, both my wife and I were patients at this space, and the parking lot has never been half-full when I was there, when it was active. So I just kind of have a personal feeling that the parking works here. If you really wanted me to get me going, I would talk about how nonsensical I think a lot of the parking requirements are in the town bylaw as compared to what happens in real life. I mean, I, I mean, for instance, saying that you need an extra 10 spaces for takeout, I mean, makes no common sense to me.
Yeah, but it comes in handy sometimes.
It does, but, but I mean, all I'm saying, all I'm saying is, is we're comparing, I mean, we're dealing with a waiver because there are kind of arbitrary parking requirements that are in the zoning bylaw. And I, I, I think what we always strive to do is to find out if there's really a parking problem in real life.
Right. No, I wasn't even so much worried about Atrius. It's the PPG. I, I mean, I think George makes a very cogent argument that on the, in the real world, if a large part of the PPG space is actually warehouse, then there's never going to be a real-world practical problem. But when PPG moves out, you're saying that if, if another office user comes in.
Yeah, I think if somebody took.
They're, they would not need a parking waiver.
Yes, they would. If, 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 if that space were leased out as 100% office, then it, I think they would probably need, it'll be up to the building inspector, but I would think they'd need a parking waiver because now it's part warehouse and part office.
Increased usage would require another waiver or another public hearing.
Right, but I'm assuming that the, the CFO for PPG is all office.
Um, I, I don't.
Well, you know, no, no one, we make these calc, George makes these calculations in his memo and all, but I don't think there's any record that says what PPG is. It's up to a determination at the time by the building inspector.
Yeah, no, I, I don't have a particular issue with this, with this application. It just seems to me that we're always kind of chasing these situations, and, and we, we always grant these waivers in these common parking situations with a little bit of, of concern that at some point it, it's going to come home to roost, that there's going to be some tenant who wants to move in. And even though they might be a similar user to who was there before, there just isn't enough parking left. And, and yet we will be told, we've granted parking waivers for the other three tenants, or the other five tenants, or the other eight tenants. How can we not grant a parking waiver for this bill?
Well.
Well, I think you have.
Again, they never come back to us unless the next tenant under the bylaw has a larger parking requirement.
I think some of it is a timing issue. I mean, I think that's the reality of the way this is written. And that's kind of up to the building to decide, you know, if this, if there's a tenant in a big open space and a tenant comes in in a smaller space, they, the reality is that they might not get the parking waiver next time. So part of it is who comes along and when.
Right.
And the way I always kind of look at it is, you know, knowing what the building is made up of now and what the new use is going to add, yeah, that might mean later on that there's not a parking waiver that can be granted, but if this is what's before us now, that's kind of all we have to go on.
No, I, I, I don't, I don't disagree, but I always wonder whether there's going to come a point at which we tell a building owner, no, that space needs to stay vacant. There isn't enough parking. And I can't imagine.
You know, there, there have been some occasions when we've done that. I can think of down at the Montessori School in the property that's over at the other side of 128. We basically told them they couldn't rent their vacant space without coming back to it as a condition of granting the school's parking waiver.
Okay. No, I, I don't mean to prolong this. It, it just, I've never completely understood what our, our thinking is on, on these parking waivers.
Well, I, I, I can say my, my, my thinking is, is that the bylaw is pretty arbitrary. And, 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 and the, what I'm concerned about at these hearings is, does the parking actually work? And if it works, I'm going to grant the waiver.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Goldman, did you, I'm sorry, I think you wanted to say something.
Uh, no, I mean, I, I agree with you, John. Your analysis is, it's empirical. That is a lot being overused, and there's no neighbor to suggest that here. And, you know, you're, you're stating your experience, and, and George has highlighted some of the low uses of the existing tenants, so it doesn't appear to be a problem. So I, I'm convinced that this is appropriate to, for a waiver as the applicant has requested.
Okay. So do you want to make the motion, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move that the applicant's request for a special permit amendment under various sections of the bylaw to waive strict adherence with off-street parking requirements, parking plans and design requirements associated with this use of the, of, of premises for a new dental office be allowed.
Second that?
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good luck. Hope it all works.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Sorry you had to sit.
Thank you.
Bye, Michael.
I think we have one last matter, and that's the usual Christmas tree request from the Norfolk Lodge. Is, is that Mason's? Is, is that what they are? Mason's? I don't know. I'm not sure. They are, they're, I think, yes. So we have the usual Christmas tree waivers. Anyone have any problem with it? It looks like finally this year, the letter from the church matches the hours that they requested.
No, actually, I thought the hours were different. Actually, where, where is that letter? I thought the hours were slightly different. Where, where is that church letter?
No, I think, I think, I, I, I checked that out because we've had that problem before. This year, I think they're the same, what the church, what the church says they offer as.
But it's a good cause, and I'm totally supportive of it.
And they are continuing to go ahead despite, you know, the COVID. They're going to try to do it all, you know, you know, keep up with the holidays and, and try to make it.
Looks good to me.
Okay, thank you. So we have to vote, or it's an informal vote?
I think, yeah, we have to move to approve it. Someone wanted, you want to do that prosperity?
Sure. So I moved to approve the request by the Norfolk Lodge to continue the special permit rented on October 16th, 1997 to allow the sale and storage of Christmas trees and related items at the property located at 1111 Highland Ave.
Second that?
An all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Who wants, who wants to volunteer to write what? We, I guess we have three decisions. We've got a denial of the three, three-car garage. We've got the parking waiver on Second Avenue, and we have Baker's Best.
I'll do the denial.
I'll do the parking waiver.
That may be the first time ever. Was there such a motion for denial?
Well, the only, it's the first, it's the first denial when I was chairing, once when I was away with Mr. Tamkin, who has more problems with third car garages on Pleasant Street. You denied it, and so you ended up with exactly the same structure, but no garage door.
It's the look, it's the aesthetics we've been advised by the planning board.
Yeah.
It looks like a garage.
All right. So Kathy, you're going to do the Second Avenue?
Sure. Yeah.
Okay, I'll do Baker's Best then. Anything else we need to do, Daphne?
And I'll get the letter out to you tomorrow for the church.
You gotta do a letter on this.
Yeah.
And Peter, thank you for sending the decision on the, the racquetball. I need to review it, and I saw, it seemed like it was thorough and extensive, the usual excellent work.
The first 18 pages were Daphne's, so.
Oh, and I lost the first, like, I lost everything that I had written prior to the other meeting, and it was so painful, even like all the, all the doc, all the documents. It was, I've never had something that harsh, because I, I don't know, the first meeting was good 10 pages. So, oh, it was heartbreaking.
Even though it was a great job, Peter, pulling it together in a cogent way. So I, I sent, I sent you a few things to explore, but not, not any, no heavy lifting.
Yeah. No, good, good, because I'm going on vacation this week.
And it looks as though we'll have a few cases for next month. So, and one of them is the Montessori School. They're, they're expanding to, I believe, what was, used to be a Chinese restaurant next to them.
And what ever happened to the Indian restaurant takeout? It's never been built.
Yeah, they never have built out.
What happened?
Well, I, I suspect that they were overly optimistic about how many people were going to subscribe. I mean, their, their hope was that they were going to get people that would say, deliver me meals three days a week. I don't know. All, all I know is it's just not been built out.
Yeah, it would have been perfect for these times.
I know. I think that it hit the COVID, it, you know, the, I think it hit at COVID, you know.
Those.
I think it really has, I think it has really, you know, COVID has really impacted businesses and especially restaurants in Needham.
Yeah, I mean, Baker's Best must be devastated.
They have been.
They have all of that space that they've committed to and parking, you know, it's, it's going to be a real challenge for them to survive.
And their food is delicious.
Yeah, we, we, we use them for catering.
Well, you have to, both of you have to increase sales a little bit.
Yeah.
Increase demand. Actually, I'm right next to him, and now I'm going to consider it as well.
I am too.
We're literally right next to him.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, I, I don't know how efficient they're going to be at doing single sandwiches, but, you know.
No, I think, you know.
I mean, it's a very different difference.
You know, there is.
I assume there's a minimum to the numbers.
But the interesting thing is, Baker's Best is their original model was a very, very small storefront. It was very small, and it was hugely successful. They always had, so, you know, it may have to be like going back to their roots, but they've always, you know, and that was just sandwiches at that time. You would just buy.
But, but, but they're on the hook for this lease for a huge building and for the parking next door.
This is true with office space, office space as well in Needham. We don't see that, that world. You know, we see, you know, the storefront world, but the office world, all of those spaces have been, you know, are empty. So, you know.
Actually, so I'm at 160 Gold Street, and that was true in March, April, May, but I can tell you, it was pretty busy today. You know, there's the cafeteria that's been closed, and there's definitely fewer people, but it's, I would say 50, 60% occupancy now.
That's good. That's really good.
I was in my office on Tuesday, and there were four of us there.
Well, who wants to be embossed with all the smog?
Well, Peter, look at the train station. There are like six cars in the parking lot. It's amazing.
Yeah, I, I think that when you read about the MBTA's budget shortfall, I think the commuter rail is really going to be on the block.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it, I don't know.
It's really hot.
All right. Anyway, thank, thank you everyone for coming and participating and.
Thank you.
It's a lot less, a lot less painful than paddle time.
Howard, please sign your, the two documents and just scan those and get those to me so I can, I can file those either tomorrow, Monday, depending on John. So these two, you know, that'd be great. Thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you. Have a nice weekend.
See you in October.
All right. Take care.
Bye-bye.
Bye.